Thank you, Jonathan Board Chair. You may begin.
I have my ceremonial gavel here, but it's too big for you. Julia, I did receive that, just so you know.
Great, thank you. We're going to be asking that you hold that up in a few moments, too.
Okay.
Glad you have it ready to roll.
Got it in my hand. Okay, I have 9:30. Are we all ready?
We are.
Thank you. The regular meeting of the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees is now called to order at 9:30 a.m. Today's meeting is being transmitted via live stream from the district's website at www.collageofthedesert.edu. You may join via Zoom by selecting the Video tab located in Board Docs or from the College of the Desert website homepage, where you conduct roll call.
Student trustee Chavez Chides.
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Yon.
Present.
Trustee Stefan.
Present.
Trustee Perez.
Present.
Trustee Wilson.
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Perez, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance today?
Sure. If everybody would please stand, please, and place your right hand over your heart, repeat after me. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice, with liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, trustee Perez. As beginning of our new year, we begin with swearing in of trustees. Here is our new trustee. At this time, we will have Monique Matthew Maldonado swear in, Mrs. Gonzalez. Mrs. Maldonado, will you now read the oath of office?
Trustee Gonzalez, please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
Hey, take it easy. And I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
To the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, our new trustee.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you all. Now, at this time, I will turn it over to President Kinnaman, who will complete the oath of office for my trustee Stefan.
Thank you, board chair. Trustee Yon, please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, trustee Yon.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Trustee Stefan, please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And congratulations, trustee Stefan.
Congratulations, trustee Stefan.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Kinnaman. We now proceed to the rotation of officers. At this time, it is my privilege that trustee Wilson will now be the board chair, and I am virtually turning the meeting over to her as chair. Congratulations, trustee Wilson.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask you all to bear with me. This is my first meeting as chair, so I'm grateful for the help from Julia and Casey and Michael there. So thank you for helping me today. At this time, I would like to thank trustee Yon for his service as board chair during this past year. Under his watch, the college and its leadership team have risen to the challenges of 2020 with a new box of tools and experienced road runners. Learning has continued at College of the Desert. Despite the global pandemic, we have provided our students with a quality educational experience and are working daily to address equity gaps and remove barriers. Throughout the uncertainty of the last nine months, trustee Yon has been a positive and unwavering leader, and I thank him for his service to our students and the college community. Trustee Yon, you've been presented with a gavel for your service as chair, and please, if you wouldn't mind holding it up one more time for all of us to see. Thank you, and if our trustees would join me in applauding, thanking trustee Yon. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to take a moment to thank trustee Mary Jane Sanchez Fulton for her service and dedication to the Desert Community College District. In the past eight years, she has worked tirelessly at both the state and local levels to address some of the biggest issues facing community colleges today. Her leadership has contributed to College of the Desert's growth with the Desert Hot Springs Satellite Campus and solidified our standing as one of the top community colleges in the state. Throughout her tenure on the board, trustee Sanchez Fulton has been passionate about closing equity gaps and making sure students have what they need to be successful in college. A strong proponent of the college's Edge Pledge Hall Pass and Meal Plan programs, she challenged the college's leadership and her peers on this board to look outside the norm and find ways to break down barriers. We thank her for her leadership and wish her well in her future endeavors. Thank you, trustee Sanchez Fulton. Best of luck. Now, I would like to welcome our newest trustee, Beatrice Gonzalez, an experienced educator and leader. I am confident she will make a lasting impact on our board and help pave the way for continued student success both now and in the future. Having led the Coachella Valley Unified School District's expanded learning after-school programs, trustee Gonzalez has firsthand knowledge of the equity gaps and obstacles students face when pursuing an education. She's worked tirelessly to break down barriers and build partnerships that leverage resources in the eastern Coachella Valley, and I'm excited to see the great work she will do on this board. Welcome, trustee Gonzalez. So happy to have you. And perhaps you'll be able to take an extra minute or two to tell us a little bit about yourselves on Agenda Item Number Eight when it comes to reports for the governing board, but congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 3.2, Vice Chairperson, trustee Perez, you will now be the board vice chair. Congratulations, sir. Looking forward to working with you in this new capacity of chair and vice chair. Congratulations, Ruben.
Thank you, thank you.
Moving to item number 3.03, Clerk. Trustee Stefan will now be the board clerk. Trustee Stefan, congratulations. And looking forward to working with you. Moving to item number 3.4, Secretary. President Kinnaman will remain as secretary for the board. Thank you, President Kinnaman. We now move on to Parliamentarian, item 3.05. Carlos Maldonado will remain as the parliamentarian and really want to thank Carlos for all of his help. Carlos, I know you're out there somewhere, so thank you so much for all the help you've given to us and thank you for the help that you're going to be giving us, particularly me, this coming year. So thank you.
My pleasure.
We now move on to liaisons. And the first item is 3.06, Liaison for the Auxiliary, which is the COD Foundation. So I'm going to ask for nominations. Do I have any nominations for the liaison to auxiliaries?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate trustee Stefan.
Okay, trustee Stefan, are you willing to serve as the liaison?
Yes.
I also understand, trustee Perez, that you are willing to also serve as backup should she not be able to attend some meetings. We know how busy she is.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any nominations from the floor? Okay, do I have a motion for the nomination for trustee Stefan to serve as liaison to auxiliaries as presented?
So move.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, well, now go to the vote. Student trustee Chavez Chides, your vote, please.
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. We now move on to 3.07, the Liaison for the County Committee. Do I have any nominations for the liaison for the county committee?
Madam Chair, this is for Yon. I'd like to nominate you for this position, trustee Wilson.
Oh, okay. And I am willing to serve with this position. Are there any more nominations? Do I have a motion for the nomination of trustee Wilson to serve as the liaison to the county committee as presented?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second, trustee Perez. Sorry, Bonnie.
One of us. We're the twins.
I love it. Okay, is there any further discussion? Student trustee Chavez Chides, your vote, please.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is carried unanimously. We now move on to item 3.8, Liaison for the Theater Committee. As outlined in Board Policy 2210, Officers of the Board, the past board chair will serve as liaison for the theater committee, and that will be trustee Yon. So trustee Yon, you will serve as the board liaison, sir. Do I have a motion for trustee Yon to serve as liaison to the theater committee as presented?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none, student trustee Chavez Chides, your vote, please.
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Congratulations, trustee Yon. This is for all of you. This is a brand-new committee that is a result of the partnership and the renewal of the agreement between the McCallum Theater and College of the Desert. So congratulations, trustee Yon. And I believe President Kinnaman, you were also going to look into whether or not trustee Yon will be attending the monthly McCallum board meetings, so we'll have an answer for you on that. Moving on to 3.09, Liaison for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Do I have any nominations for the liaison for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee?
I'd like to nominate trustee Perez.
Okay. Are there any further nominations? Trustee Perez, are you willing to serve?
Yes, madam chair.
Okay. Do I have a motion to name trustee Perez as the liaison to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee as presented?
So move, Fray Yon.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, okay. Any further discussion? Student trustee Chavez Chides, your vote, please.
Yes.
Are there any opposed? I'm sorry, all in favor. We didn't need to do that first. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Is there any opposed? Okay, so the motion is carried unanimously. We now move on to 3.10, which is the Board of Trustees for the Desert Financing Corporation for the New Market Tax Credit. Do I have any nominations for the Board of Trustees to the Desert Financing Corporation for the New Market Tax Credit?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate trustee Gonzalez.
Okay. Trustee Gonzalez, are you willing to serve?
I am willing to serve, madam chair.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the nomination for the Board of Trustees for trustee Gonzalez to serve as a representative to the Desert Financing Corporation for the New Market Tax Credit as presented?
So move, trustee Stefan.
Second, trustee Perez.
Okay. And Dr. Kinnaman, if you wouldn't mind, would you please assist us and trustee Gonzalez by providing a little bit of background on the Desert Financing Corporation?
Of course, madam chair. The New Market Tax Credit is a government incentive program that encourages new investment in a community. Colleges of the Desert entered into an agreement to take advantage of this program, which resulted in a one-time revenue to the college of over $1.7 million. The Desert College Financing Corporation was an organization that was formed to meet the requirements of the program. The Board of Directors is required to meet on an annual basis to review how the college has created economic benefit in the community.
Thank you so much. Hopefully, trustee Gonzalez, it'll give you a little bit better understanding of what this particular group is all about. Is there any further discussion on this item? If not, student trustee Chavez Chides, your vote, please.
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, this motion is carried unanimously. We now move on to, thank goodness, that's all over. Okay. We now move on to item number four, which is Agenda. And I'm going to read the following, 4.01. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2B2, "The board may, upon determination by a two-thirds vote of the board, or if less than two-thirds of the members are present, a unanimous vote of those present, that there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of the local agencies subsequent to the agenda being posted as specified." We now move on to 4.02. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda for December 18, 2020? No, madam chair. Thank you, Julia. Seeing none, the agenda stands confirmed as presented. We now move on to item five and 5.1, the approval of the regular meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections or deletions to the regular meeting minutes of November 13, 2020? Okay. If there are no corrections to the minutes, they stand approved. Moving on to item six, Public Comments. In accordance with Executive Order N2520 and guidance from the California Department of Public Health on gatherings, remote public participation is allowed and being accepted by email to otp@collegeofthedesert.edu and read into the record during public comments. There is a time limit of three minutes per person. Julia, have you received any requests? No, madam chair. Okay, thank you very much. We will then move on to item seven, and 7.01, Public Updates. President Kinnaman?
Thank you, madam chair. Trustee Mary Jane Sanchez Fulton was first elected to the Desert Community College District Board in 2012 and has served the college and her community well during the last eight years. But her relationship with the college is much longer than that, close to two decades. In addition to serving as board chair in 2015 and vice chair in 2020, she was also elected as an officer for the 2019-20 California Community Colleges Trustees Board and has served as a director on both the College of the Desert Financing Corporation and the Riverside County Redevelopment Oversight Committee. Trustee Sanchez is passionate about education and ensuring students from all backgrounds have equitable access to higher learning. Her passion has been evident in her guidance of the implementation of several student success initiatives, including the college's award-winning Edge and Pledge Program, which provides wraparound support services and eliminates financial barriers to education by providing free tuition to recent graduates of local high schools. With a background in communications and marketing, she has used her skills to assist community-based organizations and nonprofits, help underserved and under-resourced communities throughout the Coachella Valley, implement sound policy strategies. Some of her community endeavors, including being an active member in the Palm Desert, Palm Springs, Thousand Palms, and Desert Hot Springs Chambers of Commerce, the Desert Hot Springs, and the India Women's Club, along with serving as president of the League of the United Latin American Citizens of the Inland Empire. I would like to personally acknowledge my gratitude for Mary Jane's unwavering commitment to our students for her leadership and thoughtful guidance throughout the years. Her willingness to question the status quo to push boundaries and advocate tirelessly for our students. She has made an impact on the lives of countless students, their futures, and their families. So on behalf of the College of the Desert faculty, staff, and students, thank you for making a difference. Next, I would like to congratulate our new board chair, trustee Wilson, our new vice chair, Ruben Perez, and welcome our newest trustee, Beatrice Gonzalez. At this time, let me thank all of you for supporting me as the superintendent president for nearly nine years. It has been an honor and a privilege and the pinnacle of over 30 years in multiple community colleges. I've had the privilege to become friends with many prominent community college leaders across the country, and they have been instrumental in my success. However, over the past few years, I've been balancing my professional role while tending to the needs of alien parents. My mom, that has lived with us the past four years, had a stroke shortly after the college went to our remote virtual environment, followed by Chris's dad, my father-in-law, passing away in the summer, and a recent breakout of COVID-19 that included my father at his nursing care facility. All of us have struggled with different issues during this unusual time. In recent months, I've discussed with the Board of Trustees these issues with the Board of Trustees and searched for ways to find the right balance. It is difficult when there is a fork in the road. So the prudent decision at this time became evident to lessen my professional demands and placed them towards family. I am most happy to let the community know I am leaving College of the Desert to the next superintendent president with outstanding faculty, staff, administrators, and students, strong financial stability, and national award-winning academic programs, and an extremely bright future across the entire Coachella Valley and beyond. I want to also reassure the Board of Trustees and our communities that the College of the Desert team is strong. They are experts in their fields, and that is why we have been and will continue to be successful. In closing, I have indeed been on an emotional roller coaster, clearly. However, when my decision became public, the following note written by my mother was on a table in my home. So this affirmed that for now I have selected the appropriate direction, and I no longer have to look at that fork in the road. Anyway, I will always be here for you because once a red runner, always a red runner. Thank you, madam chair.
Thank you, President Kinnaman. I think each of us may have a message with regards to your announcement. And we're going to have a lot of work to do and a lot to discuss in closed session. So thank you for your presentation and your announcement. Thank you. We now move on to item eight. And 8.01, Reports. And we're going to start off with the Associated Students of College of the Desert. And Ireland Olsen, Ascot President, are you there?
I am, thank you. Here in the Board of Trustees, my name is Ireland Olsen, and I serve as the Ascot President for this academic year. Ascot is continuing to support our fellow students in this virtual environment. Several of our members, including myself, participated in the student panel put on for faculty and staff at College of the Desert. We appreciate the college's commitment to taking into account student voices. Ascot is working on ways to connect with students virtually. We are developing many avenues to reach out to our peers. Over the winter session, we will continue this work and develop a plan for spring semester. Have a great holiday, and if you have any questions, please reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ireland. We now move on to Auxiliary, College of the Desert Foundation. And we do have a report that has been submitted by Catherine Abbott, the Executive Director of the Foundation. She is unable to be with us today. So we now move on to the CSEA, California School Employees Association. Keith, are you out there? Keith Proudie?
No, I'll be presenting today's report.
Okay, Michael, thank you. Go right ahead.
All right. Good morning, everyone. As the holiday season continues, we hope you are all staying happy and healthy. CSEA has recently met with the district's negotiating team to discuss returning to work. These discussions have been pleasant and constructive. CSEA believes that the safety of all involved is the number one priority. At our last chapter meeting, a need for testing was discussed. The majority of classified staff believe that the more testing, the better. We also feel that safety for our frontline workers needs to be priority number one. This includes PPE and procedures that will ensure their safety and protection from infection while at work. In the near future, we will be discussing contract negotiations. We are excited to begin working with Dr. Neary and her team again this year. This year, multiple classified employees have applied for the doctoral program. We are happy that this program will benefit our group. We also would like to mention that a master's or bachelor's program would benefit our group as well and others tremendously. We look forward to continuing our efforts to offer as many growth opportunities to classified staff as possible. Speaking of awesome opportunities, maintenance and operations employees have been participating in training that will increase their skills. We would like to give a shout out to Brandon Topher for finding these opportunities and enabling CSEA to assist in the process. Classified staff have also been working on an initiative called Carrying Campus with Vice President Baker. This program will increase student support services and provide the campus community with resources that will improve the student services experience for our students. Finally, we would like to thank the trustees for all of their efforts, especially over the last few months. You have been detailed, available, and transparent. We appreciate your service and dedication. We would like to send a huge welcome to B. Gonzalez. B., we are excited to have you join the COD family and look forward to continuing to work with you. Stay safe and healthy. Happy holidays, everyone.
Trustee Wilson, you are on mute.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you are on mute still.
How's that?
I'm clear, thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Michael. So we now move on to the College of the Desert Adjunct Association. Michael Gladich, are you there?
Mr. Gladich, please unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you, thank you. Don't freak out, I'm not the new CODA president. The new president is Dr. Catherine Levitt, and I'm just the messenger. And please remember, don't shoot the messenger. Dr. Kineman, I just want to go off script and say that CODA and all the adjuncts offer our support to you at this time. And we are amazingly grateful for your brilliant leadership that has put College of the Desert ahead of all the other colleges in the state and maybe even in the country. So thank you for all of your work, and we wish you the very best. Okay. You have to start the clock over. No, just kidding. As we look back on 2020, we're reminded of the Chinese curse, "May you live in interesting times." We're certainly doing that. Regardless, we're happy to report that CODA has more than doubled its membership this year, and hundreds of adjuncts completed thousands of hours of training to transition from face-to-face to online, putting College of the Desert ahead of all other community colleges in the state. We particularly thank our deans and the Office of Instruction for supporting us in this challenging transition. And don't forget, we achieved all this while suffering a paralyzing malware attack. So a big thank you for the blood, sweat, and tears of VP Baker and the miracles conjured by Sheri Willis and the IT Department in meeting that excruciating challenge. This year also put a spotlight on student equity and diversity. We have learned that there is no genuine success without equity and no equity without accessibility and empathy. We also need to remember, though, that efficiency is not always the best pathway to inclusiveness. We are pleased that MOU negotiations for winter-spring, which concluded just yesterday, were well-scheduled and productive. But we urge the Board to take a very close look at the return to campus plan. We have continuing concerns about the lack of detail, the peculiar inclusion of outdated and dangerous recommendations such as two-ply woven cloth masks, the absence of recognition that the majority of people spreading the coronavirus are asymptomatic, and the remarkable similarity to a plan implemented on a neighboring district's campus, which failed to protect faculty and students from COVID-19. We can't afford to cut corners. As we move forward, we're grateful for our community of colleagues and the inspiring work of our brilliant college leadership. As we genuinely look forward to continuing positive discussions with the district's fantastic negotiating team and to mutual agreement on a new contract before the current contract expires at the end of June. We can do this.
Thank you, Mr. Gladich. Appreciate that. Oh. Okay. Moving on to the College of the Desert Faculty Association, Professor Oceana Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, colleagues. Faculty of COFO would simply like to say happy holidays to everybody. We wish you all a very warm, safe holiday season. And even though it's a very brief report, I would love to also echo some of the sentiments in Mike Gladich's report and CODA's report. Simply a wonderful job overall adjusting to these extraordinary circumstances that we have all been through this year. So happy holidays to all. Be well, be safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the Academic Senate. Kim, Dr. Dozier, are you there?
I am here.
Good morning.
Good morning. 2020 has been a year we will never forget. But rather than focusing on the cray-cray, as my 10-year-old niece calls it, this is a presentation that celebrates the amazing creativity and commitment of COD's faculty and students. Please enjoy this presentation of student success in action. And I'm going to ask for a short presentation to be played. It should be sound. From Associate Professor and Tournament Director Whitney Shaw, "We are so excited that we were able to offer this opportunity to COD students. We would normally conduct this event on campus, but obviously because of pandemic restrictions, we're unable to this semester. The students really seem to enjoy the experience, and we will definitely be doing it again next semester. Seventeen students from introductory public speaking courses performed informative speeches, which last five to 10 minutes, with students using three or more source citations that have the aim of teaching the audience about a particular topic. Students competed in two preliminary rounds, after which finalists performed for a panel of judges. From Professor Yolanda Bender, "I would like to share this semester's project presentation from one of my freshman students. It is as good as some professional ones that I have seen. This semester, the students in my hotel and restaurant management course were assigned a semester project in hospitality leadership. Part of that included the class viewing a series of short lectures from Howard Schultz, who is the founder of Starbucks. I chose Howard Schultz, not only because of his revolutionary culture and hospitality experience, but because he grew up in public housing and didn't attend an Ivy League school. The students really did relate to him." Again, from Professor Bender, "The second assignment that I have attached is the last essay that I assigned, written by a different student. In my introduction to hospitality class, I asked him to write an essay about what they learned this semester. It is so easy for us to get wrapped up in our lives and forget what the students are going through and how this year has impacted them. I feel that this essay encapsulated everything that other students expressed. It was hard not to cry listening to their stories. These students inspire me." From Professor Meredith Dillon, "I teach sports medicine classes and first aid and safety classes. I have had to be real creative in lab assignments since we moved online. We can't offer certifications from the American Heart Association in CPR and first aid since we can't meet in person and do skills labs. Check out the level of creativity from my student and her younger sister for the stabilizing and embedded object lab and caring for a puncture wound. And my student titled the assignment, 'No Sisters Were Harmed in the Making of This Lab Assignment.' Enjoy." Again, from Professor Dillon, "I wanted to share an unintended consequence of the online learning format. Multiple generations in one household are participating in learning. I can't tell you how many times students have said, 'My grandma helped me with this assignment, my child, my mom, my dad, my sister, my brother, and...' We have never heard the word Heimlich maneuver, or we have never splinted before, or we have never controlled a severe bleed before. Notice the students say 'we.' It is a full-blown family affair while they are talking about these concepts and practicing it at home. Everyone was getting trained when they were watching my at-home videos." From Professor Linda Scheps, "I am attaching some of the wonderful work from the students in my class. My class is five and a half hours every Friday. The students have been and are amazing. It is wonderful how much creativity, imagination, and technical skill the students have committed to and learned this semester. From beginning introduction of theatrical makeup to special effects for theater, film, and TV, my students have successfully overcome any of the challenges that they may have been faced with." From Professor Janet Miller, "My introduction to theater students are writing monologues to read for their final. In addition, they are to share with the class what stage configuration worked best and the set costume and lighting design. One student, Jessica Ortiz Oroyo, actually made sketches of the set and costume she envisioned. Above and beyond, so great." Professors Ruth Nolan and Jen Anne Dunning hosted a virtual reading from COD's Solstice Literary Magazine in early November, featuring current COD creative writers and alumni. From Professor Kelly Flint, who sent so many amazing pieces of art from her students that could not include them all, but featured here are Cole Sloan, Rebecca DeRost, Carol Arias, Tori Diaz, Anika Khan, Angel Rodriguez, Cindy Montoya, Carla Lopez Reyes, Michael Triplet, and Henry Zhang. "Thank you for this opportunity to share some of our successes. Have a happy holiday break and a safe and healthy new year."
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. That was wonderful. Very good. Now, we, thank you very much, Dr. Dozier. That was great. Please thank everybody for their work on that. We now move on to the reports from the Governing Board. So Student Trustee Chavez Chides, let's begin with you.
Good morning, Dr. Kineman, fellow board members, Executive Cabinet, and honored guests. First and foremost, I hope everyone is staying safe during these times and that everyone's holidays are still filled with love and joy. I would like to start my report by thanking Trustee Mary Jane Sanchez for all her hard work with the College of the Desert and throughout the Coachella Valley. I am very thankful for everything that she did for the college and the impact her work left at the college and on all of her students. I would also like to welcome Trustee Gonzalez to the COVID-19 family, and I am looking forward to getting to know her better and to work with her as well. I would also like to thank Dr. Kineman for everything he has done for College of the Desert. I know it must have been a tough decision to make as my siblings and I are recently currently taking care of my mother due to other circumstances and the hardship that comes with that. All I know is family is above everything. If there's something this year has taught me is that unity, love, and family are the most important things. Dr. Kineman, I had the chance to work closely with you, and I have seen how much time and effort you put into everything. Though you may be parting ways with College of the Desert, you will always be part of the COVID-19 family. So thank you again for your commitment and devotion to College of the Desert. And I hope you enjoy the time with your loved ones. Family is above all, and I know all of the College of the Desert students will always be grateful for all your hard work and dedication to the college. I would like to continue my report by congratulating all the students. We all made it through this semester. This past month was very stressful with finals, CSU, and UC applications and class registration opening. I myself have a lot of anxiety for next semester because all the classes that I need to graduate were only offered asynchronously, which means everything will be fully online. I wish I would have been the option to take these in a synchronous way. Because I know there's a lot of students that need that session, the space class to learn better. And I hope to see that in the future semesters that more classes are being offered both ways, asynchronous and synchronous ways. Even though I know next semester will be a challenge, I know that everything is possible with hard work and dedication. I would let that unmotivate me to enjoy my last semester with College of the Desert. For now, I'm happy to have concluded the semester and to finally be able to take a small break from school. Thank you, and happy holidays for everyone.
Thank you so much, Student Trustee Chavez Chides. Thank you so much, Student Trustee Chavez Chides. Uh, moving on to our newest board member, Trustee Gonzalez. Perhaps you could take a couple of minutes and tell us a little bit about yourself, along with your report.
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I am, uh, you know, a little overwhelmed by all the love. Um, thank you so much for welcoming me with the open arms. Um, thank you to, uh, Michael Gale from CSA and, um, and Larissa. I look forward to being able to have some, some good constructive conversations with you as well. Um, I would just like to say that, um, I'm very excited, um, and humbled by the fact that, uh, you know, folks, um, were willing to vote for me and give me an opportunity to serve them in, in this capacity. Um, I think Aurora already pretty much kind of introduced me, so I don't want to, you know, really beat the dead horse, right? But, uh, um, yes, I, I, uh, am a product of this community, a product of Coachella Valley Unified School District where I still work. Um, I loved it so much that I had to go back and work there. Been there for twenty-six years. Uh, twenty-one of those twenty-six years, I've been working with the, uh, after-school programs and restorative practices, transformational healing. Um, so, you know, I am looking forward to not only continuing the work that I do during the day, which encompasses kinder through twelfth grade, but I'm very excited to be able to also, uh, you know, influence the work that's going to be done beyond. Um, I also am very involved in the community, and I know that, uh, you know, College of the Desert, me being alumni myself, is an amazing place with a lot of, um, you know, things that they offer, and, and I know that there is just always so much more that we can do, right? And I, and I'm looking forward to, uh, to doing it together. I, I do want to take a minute, though, and, and thank, uh, Trustee Mary Jane Sanchez Fulton for, you know, her eight years of service, um, to the college board, and just thank her for all the work that she has done, um, you know, before, uh, you know, that, that I'm here now, and, and will be able to continue. So, I, you know, I've heard you, um, you know, speak of her, and, and, uh, and it's really nice to hear all the wonderful things that she was doing, and I hope to continue to, to do, you know, amazing things as well. And I'm just looking forward to getting to know all of you and working, you know, closely. Um, I will ask you to be patient with me. This is my first time in a position like this, or, uh, seeking a public office, so please be patient with my questions and, and, uh, you know, a lot of my asks. And other than that, I'm just very, very excited, really looking forward. Um, very happy to be able to share this moment today with, uh, with my children, my mom, my sister. And, you know, of course, I want to thank all of my ancestors, right? Who did all of that hard work to be able to get us here where we are now, so I want to honor them as well. And just everyone in the community in general that works so hard and selflessly every day to do everything that we can for, for our students, our parents, you know, our grandparents. And again, just looking forward to, uh, you know, to marrying all of those together and working closely with all of you and community organizations, and just hoping to move, um, you know, in, in a, in a keep moving forward and in a good direction, and, you know, just be able to, to share all that love. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, Trustee Gonzalez. And again, um, you and I go way back, um, and have worked together. We serve on a couple of boards together. Um, and, um, and be also knew my late husband, so, uh, yeah. So, we're, we're very pleased to have you on the board. Um, and we move on next to Trustee Yant.
Thank you. I want to take a brief portion of my time to thank the people that made the past year possible for me. I want to thank Julia and Carlos because they really made it possible for me to survive the year. It's, it's, it was a challenge during COVID and Zoom. And I really thank and appreciate you two for making it, uh, go through the process beautifully as we did. Obviously, last year was not the year I was hoping it would be, and none of us feel that way. But we survived it, and that means that, uh, better, better things are yet to come. So, thank all of you for helping me make it through the past year. Thank fellow trustees for bearing with me and making it through the year. In the past, uh, few weeks, we're seeing more publications that have taken a deep look into what COVID did to enrollment in colleges across the country. Contrary to what people were expecting, the actual results are not good. And in particularly, uh, public two-year community colleges saw a 10% decline in enrollment this past year. And you might say, and, you know, and when that's reported in the press, people might say, "Well, 10%?" You know, that's not that big a deal. Nationwide, that's over a half a million students that are being left behind. And that is a tremendous challenge for this country and, and a real problem that needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed not only by us as an institution, but by us as individual people in the community. And I challenge all of us to think about ways that we can support that group that didn't appear this year. The analysis of who that group is makes it real clear. It's tied to socioeconomic status. And so, we need to find ways, as an institution, as as individuals, to back that group up. This country can't afford a half a million students being left behind this past year. And I'm pledging myself to be sure that my meager donation goes to the right folks this year, so that at least we can all do something to help this tragedy, and it is a real tragedy. Uh, I think that's all I want to focus on today, so that's all for me today. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Yant. I'm moving on to Trustee Stefan.
Um. All right, um. My students say I'm very optimistic. I don't know if that's really all the way true all the time, but let's try to get this right, Bonnie. Um, I'd like to start out by saying happy holidays to all. We say thank you and farewell to our former trustee, Mary Jane Sanchez. Uh, Mary Jane, your energy, enthusiasm will be missed, not only at our college, with our faculty, our, um, classified, and our students, but also throughout the state of California. I was in an AC's meeting last week, um, for the Triple CT Board, and, um, we were talking about several trustees throughout the state that have not, um, been re-elected, and, um, the holes that will be, um, formed by that, by the lack of their presence. However, at the same time, we like to welcome all of our new trustees throughout the state. And Beatrice, I want to extend a formal, um, congratulations to you and welcome you aboard. I've always welcomed people and said, "This is family. You are now part of this family, the COD family, whether you like us or not." Um, um, I know that you will, you have a lot of great things that you can offer us. As a fellow educator, I'm really looking forward to working with you. Um, and, um, I also look forward to getting to know you much better um, in the days to come and in the years to come. Um, I would like to thank Trustee Yant uh, for your leadership and guidance during this turbulent time. I know that this is never, uh, the chair position that you envisioned. Um, the challenges that you had to face were astronomical, unbelievable, and posed new problems that no one even knew was possible. But your leadership made it possible for us to trans, traverse this difficult time. Congratulations to our trustee chairperson, Aurora Wilson. We wish you the best as you begin, um, your chairmanship here. I've always felt that the chair and the board should take a commitment oath at this time of transition, so that we recommit ourselves to the dedication of ourselves to the college and to working as a team um, for the mission of the college. As we come closer to holiday time, um, I wish for peace and joy for everyone. And although I know that gifting and gathering will be done by distance this year. I hope we'll all remember that the greatest gift is that of love. It's the only gift. It truly brings peace and joy. I think that this year, it will be expressed more clearly. Not in the hugs and kisses as in the past, but in the smiles and tears, in the hopes of a wonderful new year and the future holidays, when that expression of love can be shared in the physical presence of each other again. So, please cherish those smiles and tears this year. And, um, and I want to thank the faculty for that beautiful presentation they gave. Anytime that you share your successes and your students, and Ruth Nolan, your solstice, um, I printed that out, and I'm sharing that also with my students. That is a gift of love, I know, from all of you, and I cherish that always. Um. The next part is probably going to be the hardest part, and I'm sorry, I'm going to go over trustee, or Chair Wilson. I hope that's all right.
That's fine.
Okay, um. About roughly eight and a half, nine years ago, this college, Big Ten, was in a turmoil. The trustees saw, um, what we thought were little bonfires. And we were busily putting them out, um, working with the leadership and putting them out. Then, uh, um, president at the time had medical issues of his own. He decided it was time to retire. Uh, as he was, um, getting ready for his departure, and we were looking for a new president, we found out the little bonfires were more than bonfires. They were more like little wildfires, we thought. And we went on with our selection of a new president. We knew we had to have someone that could take the college further. We knew that we needed to, um, solve the problems that were popping up and creeping up around us. The further we got into the presidential selection process, the more we found out that the fires were worse than we imagined. I remember when we finally came to a conclusion with the help of our college community and the external community that we serve, that, uh, we, the board was eager to get the contract signed. Um, I went with the HR director, and we had, uh, met with our soon-to-be-new president of the college, Dr. Kinnaman, um, to have him sign that contract. We had just found out how bad some of the fires were, or so we thought. After he signed, I quickly grabbed that contract away from him, gave it to our HR director, who put it in his coat, um, and took the pen away, and I said, "Now, Joel, you are chained to your desk, and Joel probably will remember this." Um. And this, we need to solve these problems. And I said, "I don't think you know how great they are." And he looked at me, and he says, "Bonnie, I hate to tell you, they're worse than you can imagine." And, uh, in the ensuing months, we found out that we were not just in a wildfire that was raging out of control. We were actually, as I termed it one day, um, to my colleagues, we were in the bowels of hell. It was like being in the pit of a volcano. And, um, all you could see was the lava flow and the heat, and it was, it was horrible. Uh, at the time, I thought we'd lose the college. And, um, but Joel, once he took over in the position, uh, the board gave him free rein to do what needed to be done. The subsequent months, um, we found out it was worse and worse. Um. But the thing that I remember the most, Joel, about those first few months with you on board, was not that you gave us these horrible reports every month that seemed to be like way out, and we were getting deeper and deeper into the volcano, heading toward the core of the center of the earth. But that not only were you, you sharing with us openly what was going on, but you were also looking up, like you could see outside of that, that pit of the volcano up through the little opening at the top, and you could see something, and you could grasp it, and you would bring it back to us. And you would make sure that we got to that next little point. So that when we finally did get out of that volcano, we found ourselves not in a valley at the top, or at the top of that peak, looking up at, at other things. We found ourselves kind of in a beautiful valley, and now climbing up a hill. And over the years since then, we've climbed up the hills, but we've also climbed to the top of a mountain. And the last few years, we have been, I know someone said that, um, we've been recognized throughout the state. We've also been recognized throughout the nation. Uh, this last year, I had the pleasure to serve, and I'll be serving again, on the ACCT Committee at the national level. And, uh, College of the Desert is looked to by other community colleges as where we should be going. College of the Desert, um, has not only competed for national awards, been asked to compete for some of those, but, and been a finalist, but we've also won some of those national awards. We've presented internationally. We are in a place that other people envy throughout this state. And, um, one of the things that came out at one of the meetings was, um, I was asked point-blank by several trustees from different places, "Bonnie, how did College of the Desert do it?" And I said, "What are you referring to?" And they said, "Well, during the pandemic, you guys never closed your door." Once the state closed all the schools, all the education things down, Riverside County closed down, you did not close your doors to the students. You had distance learning in, um, going on the Monday right after that shutdown. You were the first in your area to shut down your education system. But you didn't shut it down and close the doors to the students. You kept education going. In June, you didn't just lose a few students at graduation time, or lose a few students, but at graduation time, you're, you had a record number graduating. It was the highest number of graduates you guys had ever had. How did you do that? Um, and as I looked back over the last year after Joel made his announcement, I started thinking that, yeah, Joel took us from the bowels of hell. He helped us shovel our way up and put out those fires as we went up. And we got to the top, and we got to the top of the mountain, but he never saw, lost sight of a vision that was beyond anything that other community colleges had achieved. He kept taking us higher. And I thought of when he made his announcement, like the rug had been pulled out from underneath me. And Joel, as our student trustee put it, "Family comes first. It has to." I've lost both of my parents while serving on the board. And it's, um, the time that maybe I could have spent with them rather than serving on the board. Um. I missed that time, but, um, I was able to take with me many happy memories, and I was given the time off to deal with that. Joel, I realize how difficult it is, especially for you right now, when you have both parents at the same position. Um, I had a few years. I had a few years between losing both of mine. And I wanted to share. With all of you. That the love and the commitment that Joel had when he first came on board. There were many times when I was curious about how things were going and I could, I knew where I could reach him. I knew I could reach him just a phone call away. I knew that he was probably at the college, wasn't physically chained to that desk. But I know he devoted more time to working for the college than anyone I had ever seen. He was devoted to our, our college because of our students, because of our community. And he became a major part of that. I have a debt of gratitude to you, Joel, that. I can never repay because. Because I felt that you had saved our college. And you had brought our community, our college, our community and all of our students to a pinnacle that could not ever be achieved. It was one that I couldn't even envision in all my wildest fantasies and dreams. And your shoes will be hard to fill, but I know that you're leaving as like a father. Telling us that now we must go on, we must find someone that can take us further. And that we can't stop, we have to go on. We're challenged even harder now. And I know, Joel, you'll be there when we need you. I know that. That your love for the college will end tomorrow, just like it never ends for any of us. So Joel, thank you so much. And. I, I look forward to spending the next few months with you and working with you. And hopefully we can do what's right, the board and all of us for what the college to keep it. Moving forward in the direction you've shown us the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Stefan. I'm, thank you for your remarks. Trustee Perez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to echo the comments of my colleagues on Mary Jean Sanchez. And I want to thank her for her eight years of service to the college. During her time here, the college accomplished many great things. And I'd also like to take, also like to thank her for taking on the role at the California Community College Trustee Board statewide. I want to thank her for her commitment to the college and to the students and for her, her passion, her passion and excitement. I'd also like to thank our outgoing chair for his years of service as chair, or for his year of services chair. Fred, I think you did a great job, given that most of it was via Zoom. And I'd like to, and I'd also like to congratulate Aurora on her new role. I'm looking forward to working with you over the next year. I would also like to extend a huge congratulations to our new trustee, B. Gonzalez. B, I'm so excited to be your colleague and work with you. You are an amazing individual who is greatly admired in the community and I have so much respect for you. So welcome. And finally, President Kinnaman, I want to thank you for your commitment to the college. You know, this isn't your last meeting, so I won't say too much. This, this isn't goodbye quite yet. But I do want to thank you for your leadership all these years. I'll say more in a couple, couple of months, but thank you so much, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Perez. And I thank you, President Kinnaman, for your announcement. It's, and also trustee Stefan for, for your remarks as well. I'm glad I'm not the only weeper on the board of trustees. And, you know, with the sunset of President Kinnaman's announcement, there's always a sunrise. So we have a new President of the United States coming in. We have a vaccine. And we have a new year coming and we have a new board. So we have a lot of work to do. And I look forward to the task that'll carry us through 2021. And I'll have more to say with regard to President Kinnaman's retirement in the next couple of months as well. So with that, I'll, I'll move on to President Kinnaman. I'm not sure what, what else you can say, sir, to your announcement, but I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for all, all of your sentiments. And yes, I've got a few more months and so I'll have some more opportunities to shed some more tears. The, I do want to say happy holidays to everyone. And. And please, please stay safe. Is the most critical thing at this time. Again, Dr. Yon, thank you for your leadership this past year. And Madam Chair, welcome. And I hope that this next year. Doesn't have the same opportunities, unique opportunities that we've been dealing with as well for a while, I know. And I do want to say that. The College of the Desert. Has not. The potential that's still there is just so great. And I think and believe that much more great things are going to occur. And it's because, I might go back to, it's because the people at the college. And what we learned over the years was when we can work together. At what we individually are best at. In a direction. That is focused. Then we can accomplish really great things. And I use this analogy, I probably shouldn't use it here, but. But yeah, you, you've come to know, I do a lot of things I probably shouldn't. The. You know, it's been cold lately and so. Chris. And I have gotten out those old quilts. So I had one of the old quilts out from a great grandmother. And I asked my mom, you know. Well, I didn't know which great grandmother and I asked her, who made this quilt? And she said, well, this was, uh, this one was made by your grandmother, Ron's quilting club. They did it together. That is College of the Desert. We do it together. So happy holidays. Let's keep doing it.
Thank you, President Kinnaman. Okay, so we now move on to item number nine, which is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will, agenda will be considered for approval by a single vote without discussion. Any board member may request that an item be pulled from the consent agenda to be discussed and considered separately in the action agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move trustee Stefan.
Is there a second?
Second, trustee Yon.
Is there any discussion? We have a motion and a second. My notes here say that this is a roll call vote. Is that correct, Dr. Kinnaman? Or is this?
My notes say the same, so I will call the roll.
Okay.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yon.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan. Trustee Perez.
Oh, yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. The motion is carried unanimously to approve all items on the consent agenda. So we will now move on to, since all items have been approved, we'll now move on to item number 14. Is that right, Julia? I think, action, board of trustees.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. As a reminder, we have thirteen, we have these 13 board policies. We received them last month for a first reading. They are now being brought to us for a second reading. So no changes were received between now and at that time. So we have 14.01 board policy 2105, election of student board members. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion to approve board policy 2105 as presented?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second trustee Perez.
Okay, so we have a motion by trustee Stefan and a second by trustee Perez. Any discussion on this item? President Kinnaman, roll call vote.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yon.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. This motion is carried unanimously. We now move on to item 1402. Board policy 2330 quorum and voting. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion to approve board policy 2330 as presented?
So move trustee Stefan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second by trustee Yon. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none. Roll call vote, President Kinnaman.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yon.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. So this motion has been carried unanimously. We will move on to item 1403. Board policy 2355 decorum, second reading. Do I have a motion to approve board policy 2355 as presented? Okay, I have a motion by trustee Stefan. Trustee Perez, was that a second?
Yes.
Okay, is there any discussion on this item?
I have a comment and it's probably just my interpretation, which I didn't see last time. And if other people read it differently than I, I've got no problem with it. But if you would look at the first paragraph. The inserted sentence. Says, "The board shall only consider matters appearing on the agenda." And when I read that the second time, I just want to be sure that other people read it differently than I. That perhaps Carlos can help us here. That this would be the agenda as it might be modified at the beginning of the meeting.
Correct. You have a, oh, sorry, Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes.
I apologize for speaking out of turn. Yes, trustee Yon, what you have an adoption of the agenda at the front of the agenda. So it would be anything after that approval. So whatever's posted can be altered because of the law, but you have the right to amend that. And they're, they're referring directly to the amended agenda that you approved.
So it is clear to everyone that that sentence refers to the corrected agenda. I'm just raising it as a question.
Right. Does, do you think that it needs to be reworded, trustee Yon, a little bit better that, that red?
Leaving it open to other trustees to, if other trustees don't see an issue with it. I'm okay with it, but the second time I read it, it just raised a question in my mind that some people might read that to be the posted agenda.
President Kinnaman, would you like to respond, sir?
You know, I, I see that interpretation and with Carlos's clarification. I understand how the board could still amend it at the beginning. And like I, we, we do have that language also that we always say, has there ever been any? Has there been anything since posting of the agenda that has come to the attention? To the administration, to the, to the board to add. Which.
If I may?
Yes.
The agenda is not confirmed until 4.02 with the, right after the additions, corrections and deletions. So it's officially not the agenda until that point. I believe that's correct. Am I right on that, Carlos? Parliamentary standards?
Correct.
So that is the agenda they're referring to once it's been confirmed at the board meeting.
One suggestion could be, the board shall only consider matters appearing on the approved agenda. So once you take action at 4.01, we're, we're.
Oh, two.
Oh, 4.02.
Oh, two. Yeah, the confirmation part. Yeah.
I would just feel more comfortable with that, so it's not a drop dead issue for me. It just makes me feel more comfortable.
President Kinnaman, may, may I ask why it was, you felt or it was felt necessary to add this sentence in there?
I believe these are the direct league updates, but I think I need to defer. To Julia and also probably Dr. Neary, if they can comment on that.
If I may go first, Dr. Kinnaman, Madam Chair. Just for clarification on your board policy, anything in red is a community college league of California update. And they have legal teams in place that interpret the law and legislation and how to convert that to compliance in a board policy that's before you. Anything in blue is a local change. And by board policy and administrative procedures, we are required a regular review of our board policies, which is typically five years. We're also required a review prior to the five years being up. If there is a new law in place where we have to modify a board policy prior to the year. But in red is league updates. And if I may, Dr. Kinnaman, the suggestion for the approved agenda would have to be in blue, so it could be noted that it's a local addition.
Okay, my, I am going to ask my colleagues, do you have any objection to the insertion of the word approved? In that sentence, so it would read, "The board shall only consider matters appearing on the approved agenda."
It should technically be confirmed agenda.
Okay. Does anyone have any objection to the insertion of the word confirmed agenda? Trustee Yon, are you okay with that?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this? If not, then we will. Do I have a motion to approve board policy 2355? With the insertion. Of the wording confirmed in the last paragraph. So to read, "The board shall only consider matters appearing on the confirmed agenda." So that the word confirmed would appear in the color blue.
So move trustee Stefan.
Okay, is there a second?
Second trustee.
Okay, there's a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Carlos, is, is that okay? Did we do it right?
Yeah, you did. So if I just may take a minute, you, when you asked if there were any objections to inserting that word, then you've already amended it. So this, this portion is not necessary, but since you've already done it, you can just continue. What you're doing right now is just approving the amendment though. And then you would have to approve the, go back to the, what they call perfected motion and then proceed with discussion or, or vote. and then proceed with discussion or, or vote. So you could just finish this.
Okay, all right. So if there's no further discussion. President Kineman can, I, this will require a roll call vote, Carlos, correct? For this amended, okay, all right. So President Kineman, if you would kind of do a roll call vote.
Yes, Madam Chair. Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. Okay, this motion is carried unanimously. Now I would like a motion to approve the board policy twenty three fifty five perfected.
Madam Chair, you have that motion already.
Oh, okay.
So you would just move, you would just move to discussion on that perfected motion.
Okay, is there any discussion, any discussion on that item? Okay, hearing none. Then we move to a roll call vote. President Kineman.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. Okay. Now moving on to fourteen oh four. Board policy twenty four thirty delegation of authority to the superintendent president. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion to approve board policy twenty four thirty as presented?
So move.
Some move.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Stefan, a second by trustee Yant. Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none. President Kineman, roll call vote, please.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. So this motion has carried unanimously. We now move on to fourteen oh five, which is board policy twenty four thirty one. Superintendent President's selection. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion to approve board policy twenty four thirty one as presented? I will, I'll, I'll go ahead and move. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, second by trustee Yant. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none. President Kineman, roll call vote, please.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. That motion is carried unanimously. We'll now move on to item fourteen point oh six. Board policy twenty four thirty five, evaluation of superintendent president. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion to approve board policy twenty four thirty five as presented?
So move trustee Stefan.
Is there a second?
Second trustee Perez.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. President Kineman.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. This motion is carried unanimously. We now move on to item fourteen point oh seven, which is board policy forty two thirty five, credit for prior learning. Formerly the credit by examination. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion to approve board policy forty two thirty five as presented?
So move trustee Stefan.
Is there a second? I will second. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. President Kineman, please do a roll call vote.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. This motion has carried unanimously. Now move on to item fourteen point oh eight. Board policy seven one one zero, delegation of authority, human resources. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion to approve board policy seven one one zero as presented?
So move trustee Stefan.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. A roll call vote. President Kineman.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. The motion is carried unanimously. We move on to item fourteen point zero nine, board policy seven one three zero, which is compensation. Second reading. Do I have a motion to approve board policy seven one three zero as presented?
So move trustee Stefan.
Okay, is there a second?
Second trustee Perez.
All right, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. President Kineman, roll call vote.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. The motion is carried unanimously. We now move on to board policy seven two one zero, which is item fourteen point ten, academic employees. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion to approve board policy seventy two ten as presented?
So move trustee Stefan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second trustee Yant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. President Kineman, roll call vote.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. This motion is carried unanimously. We move on to fourteen point one one. Board policy seventy two thirty, classified employees. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion to approve board policy seventy two thirty as presented?
So move trustee Stefan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee, by trustee Perez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. President Kineman, roll call vote.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. This motion is carried unanimously. We're almost done. Hang in there. We now move on to fourteen point one two. Board policy seven two four zero, confidential employees. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion to approve board policy seven two four zero as presented?
So move trustee Stefan.
Is there a second?
Second trustee Perez.
We have a motion and second on the floor. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. President Kineman, roll call vote.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. This motion is carried unanimously. Last but not least, item fourteen point one three, board policy seven three one zero, nepotism. This is the second reading of this policy. Do I have a motion to approve board policy seven three one zero as presented?
So move trustee Stefan.
Is there a second?
Second trustee Perez.
Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. President Kineman, roll call vote.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. Whew. Goodness. Okay. Moving on to item number fifteen. Action under human resources. We have fifteen point zero one. The initial proposal, public hearing and acknowledgement of proposal from the College of the Desert Adjunct Association to the Desert Community College District. This item is conducting a public hearing under the Educational Employment Relations Act regarding negotiation proposals. Today's public hearing is regard, is regarding the initial proposals from the College of the Desert Adjunct Association to the Desert Community College District. Following the public hearing, the board will take action to acknowledge the College of the Desert Adjunct Association proposals. In accordance with Government Code Section three five four seven, all bargaining proposals are to be presented at a public meeting of a public school employer, and that is the purpose of today's hearing. Since today's hearing pertains to public hearings held prior to the opening of negotiations, it is not appropriate for, nor will, members of the board of trustees comment on any of the negotiation proposals. For the public hearing, each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes per topic. Fifteen minutes shall be the maximum time allotment for public speakers on any one subject, regardless of the number of speakers at any one board meeting. At the discretion of a majority of the board, these time limits may be extended. Public hearing. The board of trustees opens the public hearing for the reopener proposal for negotiations from the College of the Desert Adjunct Association to the Desert Community College District. With speakers, attendees who wish to address this item, please comment now in the chat field or select the raise your hand button to speak. And Julia, I think you'll keep an eye on, out for us.
Yes, Madam Chair, and we are going to allow one minute for individuals to make a comment if they choose to do so.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we have not received any requests.
Thank you, Julia. So let me ask, are, are there any speakers who wish to address the board on this matter? Okay, thank you. I now close the public hearing. Now we move to action, to take action on the College of the Desert Adjunct Association initial proposals. It is recommended by the district that the board of trustees vote to acknowledge the reopener proposals from the College of the Desert Adjunct Association. Is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second? All right, I will second. Okay, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote. President Kineman. Please conduct a roll call vote.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. Okay, the motion has carried unanimously. The board of trustees hereby acknowledges the initial proposals for negotiations from the College of the Desert Association to the Desert Community College District. The parties may hereby commence negotiations. We now move on to item sixteen, action administrative services and to sixteen point oh one, budget revisions. Do I have a motion to approve the budget revisions as presented?
So move trustee Stefan.
Is there a second? I will second. Okay, is, all right, is there any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none. This is a roll call vote. President Kineman.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. This motion is carried unanimously. Sorry, getting a dry throat here. We now move on to item sixteen point oh two. Resolution number one two one eight two zero dash one, authorized signatures. Do I have a motion to approve? And there you see the, the listing, the resolution number one two one eight two zero dash one. As presented, I heard a, yes, from, yeah, trustee Yant, is there a second? Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, trustee from trustee Stefan. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none. This is a roll call vote. President Kimman, Kineman, please.
Student trustee Chavez Shides.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez. Gonzalez. Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. This motion has carried unanimously. We move on to item sixteen point oh three, consideration of approval of the coronavirus response COVID prevention plan. Do I have a motion for the consideration of approval for the Corona COVID nineteen response prevention plan as presented?
So move trustee Stefan.
Second. I will second. President Kineman, would you like to speak on this item as soon as we get it up there? It's a long one.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I would like to introduce Vice President John Ramon and our Director of Maintenance and Operations, Brandon Tofer.
Thank you, Dr. Kineman and board, and welcome trustee Gonzalez. Today, we're going to be discussing three items with you in this presentation. Our COVID prevention plan and then two. Today, we're going to be discussing three items with you in this presentation, our COVID prevention plan and then two items presenting course specific grant plans. I'm pleased to present the COVID prevention plan, also known as our reward return to campus plan for your review and acceptance. This plan's been in the making since summer, and while it was created to help us prepare for the eventual return of students and faculty to campus, it also applies to all the essential staff who've been on campus continuously since last March. The plan was developed to ensure that the college operates under the relevant guidelines and regulations from numerous agencies. I'd like to thank all the constituents who provided input to the plan, especially our maintenance and operations staff who were invaluable in helping us identify very practical concerns that we had to address. I'd also like to thank Elizabeth Gould for helping us with the screening and recording requirements that are in their plan. And then finally, I'd also like to thank Pam Hunter and Marion Champion for making the final version of the plan so easy to read and navigate, which is actually an OSHA requirement. Next slide, please. On November twentieth, Cal OSHA distributed a new temporary emergency regulation set that took effect on November thirtieth, and that gave us a whopping ten days to address, but fortunately, we were well along with it. And this applies to all employers in the state of California. This plan is required under these new regulations, and we believe that the contract tense of this plan substantially comply with all of the new requirements. This plan includes elements that apply to all persons on our campuses, including faculty, staff, students, vendors, and visitors. It's not intended to address specific facilities or situations. We have separate plans for those and that address detailed items for individual in-person courses that are developed as part of the approval process for those courses. Next slide, please. I'd like to introduce Brandon Topper, our Director of Maintenance and Operations to cover the development of the plan and the contents of the plan. Brandon co-chairs the Safety Committee along with Dr. Tim Nakamura. And then after Brandon presents, Dr. Neri will discuss the course-specific plans that are being presented today.
Good morning. Thank you, Vice President Ramon. As Vice President Ramon previously stated, this plan is developed to ensure compliance with multiple regulatory agencies and is designed to be flexible and to accommodate any changes in regulation. Once the initial draft was created to meet all the regulatory requirements, that version of the plan was presented to the Safety Committee for review and recommendations. Discussions occurred over multiple committee meetings and resulted in the highest participation we've seen at the Safety Committee. After several revisions and the inclusion of input from all constituent groups, plan was ultimately approved by the Safety Committee and is now before the board of trustees for final approval. Next slide, please. This plan contains six sections. The first is proactive measures. This includes facility modifications such as plexiglass barriers, reorganization of room contents, as well as increased cleaning protocols and operational changes. Section two covers the necessity of appropriate face coverings. Section three, physical distancing and good hygiene practices, including appropriate signage as reminders. Section four establishes a screening and testing protocol. Section five covers communication and training for all campus groups. And finally, section six is compliance to ensure that all individuals on the campus are following the plan. Next slide, please. Core specific plan development process. Next slide, please. In regard to the in regard to core specific plans, these are created as separate plans under the return to campus umbrella plan. These specific plans are far more detailed and address the individual needs of each classroom, lab, and section. The approval process for these plans is as follows. The request to open specific sections is initiated by individual departments and sent to the administration for approval. Once the request is approved, the department constructs a detailed plan for each class and room that will be used. This includes a thorough thorough walkthrough of the rooms with maintenance and operations, as well as completion of a walkthrough checklist to ensure that no items are missed. These department plans are then taken to the Safety Committee for review and approval. Once approved at Safety Committee, the plan is then reviewed by CPC, approved by Executive Cabinet, and then moved forward to the board of trustees for final approval. At this point, I'd like to hand this over to Dr. Neri to discuss proposed core specific plan.
Thank you, Brandon, and good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Board of Trustees, and good morning and welcome to trustee Gonzalez. So in front of you and later action items are specific plans for approval for about six instructional programs. The way it was determined that these six instructional programs had the highest priority is the faculty participated through their curriculum committee, and the faculty participated along with their department chairs, their deans, and any classified staff, along with the full academic senate. And six criteria were identified. The most critical of the six criteria were face-to-face requirements by external legal agency, followed by essential employees as identified by the state. And other criteria included health and safety standards and face-to-face job skills, face-to-face equipment usage, and both of which is needed to get gainful employment. And it all culminates to courses critical to complete. You will see in the next, I will be available to answer more questions when the other two action items come up. But the point is, all of these instructional programs have very unique needs, which is why they had to create separate plans and have different lab settings and different priorities, which is what they had to envision and walk through through all these walkthroughs and the equipment they use in their instructional programs. Thank you.
That concludes the presentation.
Thank you very much, Vice President Ramon. Is there any discussion from the board with regard to to this?
I have three questions.
Okay.
I guess Vice President Ramon, I guess. What is the deadline for this to be approved? Second. What are the consequences for not meeting the deadline? And third, based on what we heard earlier today, it was said that it was approved, but it sounded as if that was not unanimous approval. Concerns me a bit that the seriousness of this matter. We should reach consensus, so there appears to be people that are not yet on board. Is that the case? So those are my three questions.
Thank you, trustee Yant. As I said, the the deadline for these particular, there there's, let me back up. This whole thing started back in August when we knew at some point, we would be looking at a situation where we'd want to be getting students back on campuses. In the meantime, we also had guidance from the the county and the state that recommended that we have a COVID prevention plan, and they didn't really spell out a lot of specifics. And so as we moved forward since that time in September, there were a couple of pieces of legislation that went into effect that had to do with workers comp as well as tracing, and they were and it also turned an outbreak on campus into an OSHA reportable event. Then, like I said, back in November, just on November twentieth, the OSHA released new regulations which are binding and they they supersede any other previous guidance that requires this plan to be in place. So this and it took effect as of November thirtieth, so it didn't give agencies a lot of time, and I know that a lot of agencies are still working on developing plans. So that's really the deadline. There's also from some of that other legislation, there are there are things that take effect as of January first. So the goal is to get this plan operational as quickly as possible. And so that you understand because it's a it's a requirement of all employees or employers, which kind of moves it out of the realm of one of our policy plans or something like that. This this is this plan has to address very specific items in very specific ways. And so we're also seeing this as a living document that will change and continue to change as requirements change and as new situations arise. The consequences for not having a plan in place, and if we had an an outbreak and we didn't have provisions in place, we'd be subject to fines and things like that. And I will say that the the plan as it's presented has been how we have operationalized what we've done when people have come onto campus up till this time. This basically codifies what we're required to do by law. And then as far as the approval process goes, you know, we we started out trying to not reinvent the wheel way back when. And we borrowed collegially from another college, and when we looked at their plan, it was clearly that it was not adequate. It didn't address students on campus. And so we really did have to build from from that. So as soon as we got the shell in place that addressed all of the regulations that we knew at the time, we brought it into the Safety Committee, and the Safety Committee started meeting regularly. And various drafts were presented to them. We got feedback. The Safety Committee has constituent representative constituents from faculty, academic senate, classified students, as well as management. And that that plan was voted with one dissenting vote and the rest all in favor of the plan. And so we we felt comfortable, you know, bringing it forward. But again, we also view this plan, this is a management responsibility that we're required to have it in place, just like hazardous material plan or something like that. But we wanted to make sure we got brought in puts so that we could address things. Many of the concerns that that came in really had to do with very minute detail things that were really applicable to classrooms, which is why we created the two system plan development process. This is truly the umbrella overarching plan to address the requirements that that we're faced with now. So hopefully that.
The the concerns of the dissenting vote dealt with classroom issues?
No, the actual dissenting vote, there was only one dissenting vote, and I don't recall that there was specific concerns brought by that person that voted. There was a question at the time because at the time we voted on it, not all of the links inside the plan had been activated yet because there were still websites being developed and our insurance providers was also and is still in the process of developing all of the videos and training that they would like to see us have. So that was the only real comment and concern when the vote was brought forward.
In light of the fact that the the pandemic is getting worse, not better. Do you think they would feel that their document is now out of date?
I know that there was a comment about that, but all of the scanners that we use came straight from all of the guidance that we have from CDC, from the county, from the state. In fact, as an example, you know, we we in discussions, and again, we had our student health nurse helping us out with things and providing suggestions, and she's been getting a lot of training. But we've had suggestions or a lot of discussion about things like face coverings. For example, you know, gators are popular, but there's, you know, some evidence that they may not be as effective. So in the plan, while they're allowed under the CDC and even the OSHA guidance, you know, and we we said that we were going to discourage their use. But the the general guidance, so for example, again, the OSHA guidance for a face covering, and this is read directly out of the regulation, it says a face covering means a tightly woven fabric or non-woven material with no visible holes or openings which covers the nose and mouth. So it to me, that's a very low bar and the fact that, you know, we're suggesting a multi ply covering and, you know, the biggest thing is, you know, we realize at the end of the day, a lot of this is comes down to individual responsibility. And so we want to encourage people to comply with all of the orders that are in place. And so that's how the plan was 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 put together.
When I read this, I read it with the hypothetical case of my comparison to a high case of a person with peanut allergies. And and I couldn't help but think that existing protections for a person with peanut allergies are greater than what this document does for individuals today. So I'm a bit concerned that it is not stringent enough as the situation is worsening worsening. And so I'm also concerned that you know, even one person raising objections, I think we need to dig down to those objections. It's just too critical. That's my point.
Madam Chair, may I respond to trustee Yant's second and third question?
Yes, go ahead.
So the second question is what would be the consequences of not approving it? If this plan is not in place, we can't bring back the hybrid instruction, which is the face-to-face instruction for the six programs, which is nursing, public safety, correctional officer training, agricultural sciences, plant sciences, natural resources, automotive, heating ventilation, air conditioning, and energy systems. The in order to bring back the faculty and students in place and protect the the liability for the college and for the faculty and students themselves, this plan is required to be in place. The third.
Did we bring back nursing already without this plan?
We do not. Bring back nursing yet. They're scheduled to be brought back in winter. January fifth would be their first day.
We would doing no nursing at all for past few months?
None.
In face. Nothing in the hospitals?
No.
Nothing in cooperation with other campuses?
No. If I may answer the third question, Brandon, correct me if I'm wrong, the Safety Committee has how many members? I think it's about twenty or so.
Correct.
Okay, so I'd like to say that nineteen to one, so I want to give you example of the constituents on the committee. There are all the faculty appointments that are full-time appointed by the academic senate were a hundred percent in favor of supporting approval of this plan. A hundred percent of the classified staff who are appointed by DSCA, the Classified Staff Employee Association, had a hundred percent support for the plan. And all of the leadership appointments had a hundred percent support of the sap this plan. The dissent, there was two adjunct association represented, and one out of the two who was the former adjunct association president voted in favor. And the second adjunct association who was voted the dissent. And the dissent was based on links in the document, and the links in the document are not our own links. They're linked posted by the county, by the state, by OSHA, or any agency that is giving us updates on COVID requirements. And as Vice President Ramon just shared, the requirements, the legal requirements are changing daily. So we need the flexibility of doing live links to whatever state, county, regional, or national site where we need to keep updated and are required to keep as part of the plan.
Thank you, Dr. Neri.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead. Yes.
Um, I noticed there was walkthrough at the campus sites. How often is the walkthrough done? And at the off-campus sites, how often is that done? And is it just the classroom or facility that's being used at the off-campus site? Or is it the whole campus?
Brandon, are you still?
Do you want to answer that, John?
Yeah, I'd like, Brandon.
So good morning. Maybe I can add just a little bit of clarification to that. So what we've done so far is we are doing initial walkthroughs in the specific classrooms or labs that are being proposed to have students back in them. It is not just those particular areas that we look at. It is kind of the campus as a whole. Currently, there are no proposed classes at the off-site campuses, but really only on Palm Desert. But we are looking at things as as far as where do students park? How do students come in and get checked at the gate? How do we keep? How do we keep cohorts separated in restrooms? How do we keep cohorts separated when they in paths to their vehicles between classes? How do we schedule custodial staff to come in between cohorts so that we clean classrooms between different groups of? classrooms between different groups of students? How do we schedule custodial staff to regularly maintain and disinfect restrooms during those, those courses? So it's, at this point, we, we've done initial walkthroughs with those. I feel confident that my team can support whatever plans Dr. Neary and her team puts together. My team has done a fantastic job since March and I have all the confidence in the world in them to be able to support these plans.
And off-campus, we haven't done anything with that yet. Is that correct?
No, at this point, we've only looked, correct. We've only looked at facilities in Palm Desert.
Okay.
I have a question as well. How are we going to address the concerns of most of the spread that's going around with the viruses, people that are asymptomatic? Are we going to be conducting testing? Do we have the capacity to do so? Yeah.
Okay, thank, thank you, trustee. Perez, we, we do have the ability to refer students. We don't do testing on stipe yet at this time. And again, keep in mind that this plan is, this specific plan that, that is up right now looks at the general and response, the, the general conditions and also responds to whatever requirements that we have. The new OSHA requirements, if we have any kind of outbreak on campus, requires that we provide free access to, to testing. And again, we have various avenues that, that we can make sure that that happens.
Would it be at all possible to partner up with like Borrego Health or something to conduct regular testing every few weeks or so for our, our staff and our, our students? Is that something that we could look into?
Trustee Perez, we have a MOU with Borrego Springs. And the point of contact to Borrego Springs is Carlos Maldonado. And Borrego Springs will be working with us to provide testing options. They, we do work with them regularly with their mobile unit. And that's part of the discussion that was brought up at the safety committee as well.
Okay. I, I don't want my comments in any way to reflect a criticism of the work that went into this. My comments are only directed in, in that this, it is growing fast and it's going to change so rapidly. I'm just feeling that we need to be put more effort into this document. So I'm not critical of the work that's put into it. I'm just asking that we put more work into it.
And trustee, they, one of the requirements is that the employers, and again, it's a management responsibility. It says that they shall establish, implement and maintain an effective written COVID-19 prevention program so that that maintenance role is a very important responsibility on management to make sure that we respond to all of those changes and continually update the plan. And, you know, I, I expect that we'll be holding a lot of additional safety committee plans so that we can, I mean, meetings so that we can review to them any updates and regulations and any changes in the plan that need to be done from a regulatory side.
Thank you, Vice President Ramon. Dr. Neary, are there any other comments?
I, I have a question regarding the, the five proposed programs. I don't know if I should ask it now or do I wait until sixteen, sixteen point oh five? Is that appropriate time to ask?
Let me see here. Why don't we, should we wait till sixteen oh five, Dr. Kineman? Think we should wait till we come to that item.
Okay, sure.
All right. With regard to Dr. Yance comments, I, I, you know, I, I agree with him. And, but I also appreciate and understand the explanations provided by, by Dr. Neary and Vice President Ramon. So I get it. It's just remarkable to me that this one dissenting vote made it into a formal report that came to this board. So my, my question would be is that how, with this plan now, how with the vaccinations now coming and, and, and teachers, essential workers getting priority? Dr. Kineman, Dr. Neary, how would you, how do you respond to with the vaccinations and how that's going to play in with, with this?
Dr. Neary, you want that or you want me?
I would defer to you first, Dr. Kineman, and I'd be happy to.
You're so good. The, and again, I think all of us are, we've been living with this since March and we're all anxious and we all probably have somebody, if not ourselves personally, that have some type of underlying symptoms or conditions and want to do everything that we can, can, and we have. I think if you, if you look at us compared to other institutions taking great caution in this. And I know that's how the safety committee moved forward on, on putting this plan together. The, you know, we just now have the vaccines rolling out in the valley and we've seen that some of those right on the front line are beginning to take those vaccinations. I think it's going to be dependent on when they get to us on the list. And, you know, that's part of that uncertainty and that change, I, I think that we're going to be experiencing also in our plan. And, you know, the sooner that occurs, of course, the more comfortable we're going to be with having more face-to-face classes. And, and we're going to be having to have dialogue with our constituency groups as well as our bargaining units on this topic. Because we, we know that there are individuals that may not desire to take vaccine. And so those are going to be some discussions that we'll, we're going to have to, to work through as well. And so I wish, I wish I had a crystal ball on this one and some certainty around it, but there is, you know, there is uncertainty. I, I, I mean, just myself, I got a call the day before yesterday from where my dad's at and they asked me, the state's asking how many vaccines we need. Is it okay for him to take the vaccine? I didn't realize they would give it to people that already had COVID, which was interesting to me. But I, you know, again, the, the plan that the safety committee though has brought forward, I believe provides us some structure. And it gives, keeps us having the conversation as the situation changes. I know when we first started in the summer, working on the plan, we're much more educated because we went through this process of developing the plan and now we have an obligation to modify it as we become more informed, which keeps us up to date and, and as current as we can be under the circumstances.
Dr. Kineman, I'd like to add one other thing too, is that, you know, as the safety committee talked about it and we heard from the constituent groups, there was a number of things that as you can, you know, very clearly understand, this is working conditions which, which are clearly bargainable. And so there's very specific concerns that were brought forward where we didn't want this plan to overstep or in any way try to circumvent the, the group's rights to bargain those things. And, and I know that many of the specifics were, were brought into that and, and those have worked their way through the various MOUs.
Thank you. And I, I think the operative words here are that this plan is flexible and fluid, you know, which is really going to be the, the key to all of this. Do we have any other comments or from other trustees?
Madam Chair, trustee Gonzalez, just for clarification, I, I did hear mentioned that this plan is mainly to address the Palm Desert campus. Just, you know, from my own knowledge, does this mean that there is no thought right now is opening up any of the other campuses?
Dr. Kineman?
Dr. Neary, would you speak to that and, and maybe also you could speak to why, and, and I know it's in the documentation, but speak to why the programs were selected because of maybe having unique equipment and those types of things that may, may not exist at some of the other sites.
So, thank you, Dr. Kim, and thank you, Madam Chair. Trustee Gonzalez, the, the primary driver for these six programs, if they have, they have legal or required face-to-face requirements that if we do not fulfill, they cannot graduate, they cannot complete their certificate, or they cannot sit in for licensing and exams. And above and beyond that, the reason these programs were chosen, it wasn't so much a matter of campus sites. It's where their, their specific labs are located at. So for example, nursing simulation lab, we got approval at the Board of Registered Nursing. We only have one simulation lab in the valley and it's located at Palm Desert. And the reason they need to actually go to that lab is because there's not enough clinical sites in the valley to accommodate our student nurses so that they can complete. So we got approval from the Board of Registered Nursing to supplement or replace the clinical hours that they would have done on onsite with our simulation mannequins and our simulation lab. So that's why nursing is also nursing is part of the essential category. We got a call from the State Chancellor's Office that any programs that have face-to-face requirements and are part of the essential categories identified by the State Chancellor's Office, we had a call from the Chancellor begging, if you will, to please complete those requirements because they need them in the field. So our next program that fits that is correctional officer training. And the other one is the FIRE Academy. So the FIRE Academy currently is located at the Palm Desert campus. They're specialized labs. And the correctional officer training is located also at at the Palm Desert location. However, for the future, in the past, if I may, Dr. Kineman, we have signed an MOU with County Sheriff's Office. So basically, we're trying to home grow local correctional officers, especially ones to staff the Indian jail. So we have plans in our enrollment management committee to make the Mecca thermal and expand on it so that we can provide premier public safety facilities and home grow our local community to earn these correctional officer jobs that would be staffing the Indian jail and many of those salaries as much as a hundred thousand. So even though we have a specialized location, this cohort that will train the twenty or thirty are currently employees of the County Sheriff's Office and live primarily in East Valley. And once they graduate, they would be offered employment and one, an area to start opening the Indian. The other programs, agricultural sciences, plant sciences and natural resources, they have five outdoor labs and two classrooms located at Palm Desert, but they do have an outdoor lab in Mecca thermal, right? So there is a potential if they need to access additional agricultural land that they would submit for a walkthrough with maintenance and operation and Brandon to have access to the facilities that they needed. But right now they have about five outdoor labs. Then the other two programs, heating, ventilation, air conditioning and building and energy systems, their specialized lab is also located at the Palm Desert. They do have a mobile unit that they're developing, so we can go valley wide, but that's a future endeavor. And the last project is automotive technology, automotive technology, their bays and their garages are located also at Palm Desert. And all six programs have legal requirements to have onsite experience with the machines in order to be gainfully employed and to pass health and safety standards for those programs. If they do, if they don't already have external legal agency requirements. And as far as our relationships valley wide, we are continuing working with Coachella for evening college. We have planned rotated pathways for a Mecca thermal all the way to desert hot springs. Nursing will be the first ones to go out in January 5th. The other five programs won't attempt to try until the start of the spring semester. And we're hoping with nursing as a model that it will provide an opportunity for expanded services and other programs to potentially return dependent on the current climate of COVID. I hope that answers your question and please let me know if you have any additional questions just.
Oh, Madam Chair, I'd also like to, just to clarify the, for the item that's under consideration for the, the COVID prevention plan, that does apply to all sites. We do have staff at each of the sites currently mostly public safety, but it does apply to all of the sites. Again, the, the, the view of this is when there are people there, this is what they're going to do. So.
Thank you. Thank you. BD, have any other questions on this?
No, thank you very much, Jesse. Thank you for clarifying for me.
Okay, is there any other discussion on this item? Okay, this, this is a roll call vote. President Kineman?
Yes, Madam Chair. Student trustee Chavez, side yes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Yance?
For the reasons I discussed, no.
Trustee Stefan? Trustee Stefan?
Yes. Okay. Only missed a spot.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes. The motion is carried four to one. I would like to thank the safety committee, the executive cabinet and the CPC for all of their work. We now move on to item sixteen point zero four. Consideration of approval of the COVID-19 response. Five proposed programs for hy- hybrid offering plan. President Kineman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would like to ask Vice President Dr. Annabelle Neary to explain more about the return to nursing simulation center.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I apologize. Before I ask President Kineman to do his presentation, can I have a motion for consideration of approval of the COVID-19 response returned to nursing simulation plan as presented?
So move, trustee Perez.
Is there a second?
A second, my student trustee.
Okay. And let's see, so we have a motion and second on the floor. Carlos, I get to make one mistake. You didn't throw me a card. So President Kineman?
You're doing fabulous.
Thank you.
You really are doing fabulous. This is a long, a long agenda and with all those policies and procedures.
I have a gin martini waiting on the, on the side. Go ahead, President.
All right. Dr. Neary, would you explain to us this return to nursing simulation center plan?
Well, thank you, Dr. Kineman and thank you, Madam Chair. So this plan was this planning through the Director of Nursing, Carol Stoli, the full-time faculty of nursing, the adjunct nursing and the classified staff who work in the nursing simulation lab. They were working in consultation with the clinical sites. And the reason the nursing has to have a separate plan, their standards, if you will, it has to be tenfold stricter than any other programs or any COVID return plan. And it's very specific to the skill they're learning or their site they are at, at any given time. So their proactive measures, including their PPE, their face max, their protocols have a much stricter policy. And that's why it's such a long document. And if I can have the document scrolled down to a table at the end, you'll see how specific the details are, how much PPP they must. how much PPP they must wear, what kind of mask they have to wear, and what are the student counts and what professionals have to be there. Now, they have testing requirements and they have onboarding requirements that are required for their profession. If I can have you scroll down a little bit more as well. And so, but the most important thing is this document was authored by the nurses themselves, the sites they work with, and their stricter regulations. And at the end of the document, like I said, they have different simulations that they have to work with, whether it's OBGYN, whether it is emergency, whether it's intensive care units. So a lot of what they have in this plan is specific to the location. Yes, please stop right here. And it not only meets all OSHA, county, state, and federal recommendations, it exceeds it.
Anything else, Dr. Neary?
I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any, Madam Chair.
Are there any other comments from the board?
I appreciate the tale of this document and support our nursing factor.
Okay. If there are no other comments from the board, this is a roll call vote. President Kinnaman?
Student Trustee Chavez Shides?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Yon?
Yes.
Trustee Stefan?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
And Trustee Wilson?
Yes. This motion has carried unanimously. Want to thank Carol Scobie and her staff and everyone else for their hard work in putting this plan together. Amazing job, all. Moving on to item 16.05, Consideration of Approval of the COVID-19 Response, Five Proposed Programs for Hybrid Offering Plan. Do I have a motion for the consideration of approval for the coronavirus response, five proposed programs for hybrid offering plan as presented?
So move, Trustee Stefan.
Is there a second? Okay, I will second. Any discussion? Trustee Perez, I believe you had a question on this?
I do, yes. A couple of employees expressed concern to me regarding the, specifically the HVAC and automobile program. They feel as the start date might be a little rushed so soon after the holiday. And they think that it might be borderline impossible to sanitize everything. I want to know if these concerns have been addressed. Is there possibly a later start date that we could possibly use in order to address these concerns? Obviously, safety is the utmost priority for everybody. So I want to know if there's a possible later start date that we can use or if these concerns haven't been addressed yet.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could ask Dr. Neary if she could maybe explain a little bit more about the programs and specifically respond to the Vice Chair's questions that haven't been presented.
Dr. Neary?
Thank you, Dr. Kinnaman, and thank you, Madam Chair. Trustee Perez, so the classified staff, the adjunct faculty and the full-time faculty who will actually have to step in these spaces, participated in the walkthrough. So, for example, Automotive Technology, all the automotive classified staff participated, including the current CSA President Keith Proudie, participated in their walkthroughs, gave feedback with Brandon and Maintenance and Operations, and gave recommendations that they felt were safe enough to return to their classrooms. And then the adjunct faculty and full-time faculty, they're the ones who proposed the start date as the start of the spring semester. And similar for all the other programs, the people who were involved were the classified staff, the adjunct faculty, and the full-time faculty who would actually have to be in those physical spaces. So they were part of the walkthroughs in order to ensure that all their concerns were addressed by Brandon, Maintenance, Operation, Public Safety, and/or Administrative Services. And the programs came forward because all the groups who would be occupying the space felt safe, safe enough to return. In terms of your question, no concerns from the classified staff has been brought to my attention. You may know that I'm the chief negotiator for the Classified Staff Union. I actually just met with them yesterday. We have a collegial relationship where they're more than welcome to bring up any concerns to my area or my office or to the committee that we would be happy to look at.
Sure. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
And, but to your question, no, nothing like that has been brought forward to me from the classified staff or the CSA.
Would it be possible, just to clear any confusion on the start date, would it be possible to get that in writing as to when the beginning of the semester would be? I think that'd be the end of January, correct? January 20, I mean, January 27th is the beginning of the spring semester?
If you would give me a moment, Trustee Perez?
Sure. I just want to clarify or make it clear in the language that, you know, that the HVAC and the automobile program are going to start at the start date, which is January 27th, the beginning of the spring semester. That way, there isn't any confusion, if that's at all possible.
If it is approved today, they would be starting on the first day of spring semester, which is January 27th. There's only one that's starting January 5th, and it's nursing.
Alrighty, thank you so much. That clears my questions.
I have a question, if I may.
Trustee Stefan?
Thank you. My question is this. These plans are great if we've got them in place, like we're supposed to and everything, and we have these plans. But if something happens and we get another county shutdown, these do not move forward, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or is there any other discussion with regard to this item? Okay, if there's no further discussion, this is a roll call vote. President Kinnaman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Student Trustee Chavez Shides?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Yon?
No.
Trustee Stefan?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes. This motion carried four to one. We thank all those for their hard work on this plan. We now move forward to item number 17, Instruction. There are no items under this agenda. So then we move forward to item 18, Information President, and item 18.1, Administrative Procedure Review. Administrative Procedure 4235, Credit for Prior Learning, is being brought to us as an information item. This procedure has been reviewed by Executive Cabinet and the College Planning Council. So it is an informational item only. President Kinnaman, was there any comments you'd like to make on this?
Madam Chair, if I could defer to Dr. Neary on this as a...
Information, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Dr. Kinnaman. So the credit for prior learning administrative procedure is now legally required by the Chancer's Office. Formerly, we used to have something called a credit by examination. And what a credit by examination is, is that if a student has expertise in a certain subject like Spanish, that they could actually take a credit by examination and earn credits for college without having to take the entire course. The state is now requiring us to expand that definition for credit for prior learning. So many people have skills or trades because they participate, they were in the military or the applied sciences like construction and welding. And so what this administrative procedure does, it lets students get through their pathways quicker. So instead of them saying, you have to take these 10 classes, there is a process in place where they said, I've been in construction for 10 years. Can I get credit for my prior learning? And they will be issued the credit without having to waste six months, a year, for something they already are experts in. Same for our military. Our military has many expertise, whether it's in administration, whether it's in welding, whether it's in business, they can now ask for credit for prior learning due to their military experience, and they can also get military credit. So this administrative procedure and the intent of the Chancer's Office was to shorten the pathway, issue credits so our students can complete faster and get well-paying jobs right away.
Excellent. Are there any comments?
I think it's wonderful that we're giving the veterans credit. That's one thing that at the Triple CT, the Veterans Caucus has always been pushing for is to try to get the veteran credit for their years of service in the military or armed services. So thank you for this.
Okay, if there are no other comments, this is an informational item. And thank you for the explanation, Dr. Kinnaman, Dr. Neary. We now move on to number 19, Future Agenda Items, number 19.01. To my colleagues, I ask that you please submit any future agenda items you may have to the Board Secretary, and they will be incorporated into the meeting minutes. So, we now move on to item 20, Closed Session, 20.1, Recess to Closed Session. Before we adjourn today's meeting, I have a couple of comments to make. It's with great sadness that I share with you the news of the recent passing of two Coachella Valley community members, former Rancho Mirage City Council member Arthur Newman and longtime friends of the COD Library supporter Henry Kotzen. After, for Arthur, after earning a bachelor's degree in business administration, Arthur Newman became an actor and production manager working alongside his Academy Award-winning brother, Paul Newman, in films such as Cool Hand Luke. Well-known for his charitable contributions, Arthur and his wife Patty have lived in the Coachella Valley for almost 40 years. They work with the Newman's Own Foundation, started by Paul, which has distributed hundreds of millions of dollars to nonprofit organizations worldwide since the 1980s. At the local level, Arthur served on the Jocelyn Center Board of Directors, and he and his wife have been major contributors to the Palm Springs Opera Guild of the Desert and the CV Repertory's Youth Outreach Program. They have given time and funds to the Palm Springs Art Museum, the Act for MS, as well as the Coachella Valley Wellness Foundation. Proponents of education, this couple, they contributed throughout the years to College of the Desert's foundation, most notably supporting the creation of the nursing complex in 2009, along with more recent donations backing efforts such as the Digicom Learning Collaboration. College of the Desert sends its sympathies to Patty Newman and to the Newman family. About Henry, passionate about learning in literature, Henry Kotzen volunteered with the Friends of the COD Library and reported to their bookroom every Monday morning for the last 20 years. A true book lover, his specialty was in identifying and pricing valuable older books. Present at every book sale, Henry could be spotted wearing his familiar red apron, lending a helping hand wherever he could with his wife Alice, not too far from his side. With his help, Friends of the COD Library has provided funding for many unbudgeted library needs, including thousands of books, encyclopedias, and equipment, enhancing the College of the Desert Library offerings, and furthering our students and their success. A true gentleman and friend to all, Henry's volunteer efforts are an example of the many wonderful ways our community works tirelessly to support education at College of the Desert. He will truly be missed. And so today, we close our meeting in honor of these two men, Arthur and Henry, from a grateful community college. At this time, the board will now recess to closed session. The live streaming portion of this meeting will now conclude. Should there be any reportable action? Yes.
Madam Chair, could I insert something?
Sure.
With your permission? Email contact with Catherine Abbott during the meeting and about our student emergency fund. And she tells me that the fund is getting very low due to the number of students we have to need. And so I'd like to encourage people to consider their year-end contributions to that student emergency fund. Catherine says it's very, very low. So we've got a pressing need there. So I'm trying to encourage people to step up to the need.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Yon. So, we're going to recess to closed session. The live streaming portion of this meeting will conclude. Should there be any reportable action, I will report it to the Board Secretary, which will get incorporated into the meeting minutes and posted before the end of business today. So, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I want to wish everyone the happiest of holidays. Thank you all for your hard work this year. Please stay well, and we will see you in 2021. Board members, if we can, please take a 15-minute break. And President Kinnaman, and ask that you please join closed session. What time is it, Julia? So 12:30, how about if we start up again at 12:30? Is that okay with everybody? We get a few minutes? Okay, and if there's any action, Julia will read it out to all of you. So thank you and very much, and we will see you soon. This stands adjourned. Thank you.
Bye, everyone. Happy holidays.